Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We will call the first meeting of two, 2019 for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we turn it over to the clerk, let me note there's a copy of the Public Meetings Act on the north wall of the chamber if anybody wants that, too. There's an automatic defibrillator in the back of the room for health reasons in case that is needed for some reason. And three, I'd ask you to mute or turn your cell phones off for the purpose of the meeting. Mr. Clerk.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We'll do a start the roll call. Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Present.
Commissioner Craft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
We will call for the election of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners for the ensuing year. Are there any nominations?
Commissioner Rogers, your Chair.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, a second by Commissioner Duda for, to nominate Commissioner Rogers. Are there any other nominations?
The other thing is, when you file an appeal, which it clearly states in the documentation, how to file that appeal and where to file that appeal, and then it doesn't get put on the docket for six months.
Right. So, you're the local representative of this Wisconsin corporation, is that right?
No, sir. It's in a...I'm the plant controller of the Omaha plant. The corporation is in Ohio.
Ohio.
My boss is in Green Bay.
I see.
So, he was intercepting my predecessor's emails until...so, last year was like my first year that I filed them on time.
Right. But is it part of your job description to handle these matters on behalf of the corporation?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're aware that these come due every year, is that right?
I...yes.
Okay. So, when it came due, is it in May?
May 1st.
May 1st. What...I mean, did you have it on your calendar, or you just missed the date, or what?
I have it on my calendar now. I didn't have...
[laughing]
No, I didn't have it on my calendar. I just assumed that I would get some type of a reminder like we normally do.
Sure. Right, right.
And, you know, it was just, I didn't get it.
Right. So, I know that Commissioner Boyle had some concerns initially on this, and I must apologize. I wasn't paying close attention to when you were speaking on your motion. But does it go to what we're talking about here relative to her ability to receive the notice, or mislay the notice, or whatever?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
It does, to some extent. You know, I...it's...there are so many notices that people receive from the government about everything under the sun, you know, about their sidewalk not being quite right, and all sorts of things. And so, I just think it's an additional burden, and I just think there must be a way for us to help companies that they're willing to pay. They would've paid this in a minute, but something went wrong. And we have that happen with churches and people and other things. And I just think that we need to figure out how we can better serve the taxpayers. And I think there's a way we can clean this up, so that doesn't throw this burden on them. And this is not on the assessor's office. It's not on the county clerk. And I don't know, I think maybe it's in this letter, how we're saying things. But I just want to treat the taxpayer better. We've got to figure out a way to do that, and I think we can, because that's where our hearts are, too. We're not...we don't like seeing this happen. So, that's kind of where I am. But I...but notices are difficult. I get them. I've probably got one pending on my law office that I don't want to respond to either. But anyway, Goodwill always bails me out on that, though. But I know how to find him. No, but seriously, I think it's...we need to figure out how to get the letter more specific and say that this isn't working.
So, Mr. Goodwill?
If I may just a minute.
Sure.
And I don't mean to be the Grinch who stole Christmas here. And I know this makes me sound really, really cynical. I don't mean it in bad light, and I certainly am not directing this primarily at you, Ms. Bohannon. But everybody that files late, when they get their penalty notice, they all have a tale of woe, okay? The bookkeeper ran off, or their computer system went down, or the mail didn't come, or some such thing. And so, I don't know that we want to get into a contest of how many interesting reasons people can come up with for not filing on time. I mean, the statute is pretty clear. You file on time, or a penalty is imposed. And, you know, what are you going to do? Ms. Bohannon says she didn't get the reminder. So, that's good enough, but the next guy's excuse is not going to be good enough. I mean, where are you going to draw that line? Or are you just going to say, "Here in Douglas County, we don't impose any personal property penalties for late filing, ever, period, end of sentence"?
I'd be for that.
Okay, cool.
No, when you're through. Well, I have a question relative to the May 1st notice. Now, we all, I think, are pretty aware that April 15th, you're supposed to file your federal income tax, you know? But other taxes aren't quite, you know, that stuck in our minds particularly today. What I'm getting at is, what do you send to folks to say, "Hey, this got to be in...your homework's got to be in by May 1st"? Is there a piece of paper that you send to them? Is there a piece of mail that goes to folks?
There is usually something that goes out at the start of the season, and then a reminder about halfway through.
And those went out, in this case, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And those are US mail documents?
Could be email, if they're for the online filing. We've been encouraging people to file online for quite some time.
Yeah.
But here's the thing. That's a courtesy, all right? There is no statutory obligation to do that. And in fact, at one time, we used to send paper returns, three-part paper returns. So, people would fill it out, and they'd send our share, and they'd get to keep a copy. That got thrown over the side about half a dozen budget cuts ago, okay? And so, we're constantly weighing what our statutory obligations are, and what we can do in terms of manpower and money. And quite frankly, one of the reasons those...that three-part form went over the side, two reasons. One is we were trying to encourage people to start filing online. But second was the sincere belief that with business people, we'd have to do a hell of a lot less spoon-feeding than for homesteaders, or even nonprofits filing exemption returns. We thought we'd be dealing with accountants, and lawyers, and people that companies hire to do their books on a regular basis. We thought we'd have a heck of a lot less administrative problem with those folks who would calendar these returns and had some familiarity with what those obligations were than we would, you know, the person that gets roped into being the secretary for their church because it's kind of their term, you know? And yet, here we are sometimes.
So, and this is kind of my final question on this. Hundreds of thousands of these returns must be due every May 1st.
They are.
Okay. What percentage fall into this category that we're dealing with?
Of late? You know, I don't have a number, but I...at least I don't have a current number. At one time, it was my impression that we were, you know, timely about 85 to 90 percent.
That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle, you need to...
Yes, well, what I'm thinking about here is that I'd like to ask everybody in the chamber, if you have an automobile, when does the license plate expire? Do you know what month?
Yes.
Do you know what month?
Absolutely.
Well, you get it in the mail, of course, don't you?
Yeah, in the mail, but I know anyway.
I don't.
I can tell you. It's stuck on your...
Hold on, hold on. Wait a minute, let me get a little...it was fine when it was loose, but it's getting too much now, so...
It's kind of fun. Anyway, my point is that there are so many of these deadlines occurring. I'd like to see us do this smart some way, and let us assist, and not be on the opposite side of people who are trying to pay their taxes, and then penalize them when something bad happens, something simple. But there's got to be a way to link this to something else. I mean, maybe if they were Nebraska owners, for example, we could...the treasurer's office does a great job sending out the state, or wherever it is, sending out those notices. We just got one, and Anne's license was frankly was renewed all the way...didn't even have to go to Douglas County, went straight to Lincoln and came back. I mean, there's a smarter way to do this, and I'd like to help the taxpayers. So, I guess what I'm going to say is this. I'd like to see us, Mr. Chair, discuss this in a committee, and hear from people about how we can make this work. Because I don't like having taxpayers having to come down when we all know, all of us on this side of the table know, that there's nothing we can legally do. And I would like us to rephrase this letter, so that it doesn't quite...it doesn't...it makes it real clear that we can't do anything. So, I'll talk to you about that again. But I think we need to quit doing this to taxpayers. I'd like to try to find a fix. So, sorry it didn't work out.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, what's the will of the board on IMH? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we follow the direction of the assessor's office and deny.
Is there any reason to make a motion, because we don't have the ability?
Well, we have to act on it.
Why do we have to act?
Please, Theresa.
Theresa here at County Attorney's Office. No, you do...taking the motion and a second and voting would be the more appropriate course of action, because they have a right to appeal your decision to Turk. And so, that would...there needs to be a resolution of what's before the board today. Thank you.
So, there's a motion by Commissioner Morgan to proceed with the suggestion of the assessor's office, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Seeing no more discussion, please vote.
Also want to thank Theresa.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no. Commissioner Boyle present, not voting. All other commissioners voting yes.
Is there most to adjourn?
Maybe.
How do I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
For those without an agenda, the Board of Corrections meeting has been postponed. And back...with that, we will bring back to order and reconvene the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll go to item one, which is minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 18, 2018. Letter B, approval of claims submitted for payment and processed through Tuesday, January 8, 2019. Item C is approval of resolution, authorizing the clerk of control to make certain payments for county board meetings canceled during the calendar year of 2019. What's the will of the boards?
Oh, good. For approval.
There's a motion by Commissioner Morgan to approve items A, B, and C. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item two is consent agenda. There is 11 items on the consent agenda. Let me point specifically to J.3. There was a typo there, and it should be under the reappointments for the last one, which is mine. That should be January the 1, 2019, to December 31, 2021. Excuse me. With that, I feel dyslexic on that. Is there a...Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I just have a couple of questions on...
Let me do one thing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, and seconded with that change? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. On item C, which is an amendment to a contract with Region 6, and I don't know if Ms. Glasnap is here, or anybody from that office is here, but I'm looking at this amendment, and it's kind of in conjunction with another document under the Finance Committee's agenda, which these two appear to, I don't know, go into the same kind of category. The amendment to the Region 6 contract reads, "Region 6 shall pay the service provider, Douglas County Community Mental Health Center, a total amount not to exceed $3.304,928 million for FY '19 activities specified herein." And then, if we go to page two of the budget outlined in the Finance Committee's budget comparison summary in our attachments, we see a couple of items. One of them is a community mental health appropriation, which shows approximately the same amount, $3.1 million. And another is, under Douglas County Health Center, a budget item that shows $451,585.34 for long-term mental health, unexpended. This goes to a question that I think we've all been talking about here and at the trustees' meeting over at the Health Center, relative to the total lack of long-term mental health beds in Douglas County. It appears to me that we have two items here totaling millions of dollars that we're spending on mental health activities. And I was hoping that Ms. Glasnap could be here to maybe kind of clarify this. I have had brief discussions with our staff relative to the amounts, and I don't know if we've been able to resolve where they're at. It appears that we're changing the amount from Region 6, and it appears that we have another amount of almost a half million dollars for specifically long-term mental health care that's unexpended. And my questions are, what are we doing here? And what are we doing to try to provide some minimal long-term mental health care beds in Douglas County? And I don't know. Joe, you and I had a brief discussion on the $451,000. Have you been able to find anything out on that?
Not yet, but just in looking at it, you know, we separated the funds this year, and there's the Health Center, which is 12513, and the Community Mental Health Center, which is 12517. So, when I look at it, it says long-term mental health. It's a $451,000 payment that wasn't budgeted. So, that...this was some sort of grant, or it's revenue. So, it was some sort of money that came in that wasn't budgeted. But because it's up in the Douglas County Health Center, I don't think it's at all related to Region 6 or the CMHAC. It's just...but I'll follow up with Didi Will and find out exactly what it is. But it seems to be some sort of payment that may be for, since it's long-term mental health, that would be patients at the Health Center who might have mental health issues that we're receiving some sort of funding for. But I will find out exactly what it's for.
And commissioners, I just want to clarify. So, the county does not do long-term mental health, per se. And so, this is...we have long-term care patients, who, as Joe said, who have mental health diagnoses in addition to their long-term care issue. But we do not have budgets for long-term care, per se, nor have we ever done that.
We do provide, sir.
So, are you aware, Mr. Bloomingdale, what this $451,000 is?
I was just made aware of it now, a few minutes ago, so we'll have to talk to Didi Will over at the Health Center and find out what it specifically pertains to.
Okay. This other item, then, the consent calendar item of $3.3 million, is that related to the item that we see here in the budget relative to Douglas County Mental Health? It's a similar amount, but it's not exactly the same.
I think I can shed some light onto that. So, the Community Mental Health Center contracts with Region 6. Region 6 provides funding through that contract for mental health services. Throughout the year, every quarter, we're able to go through our budget to see where the spin downs have occurred, and what, if any, shifts we need to make in those dollars. This is a shift to the Community Mental Health Center to the tune of about $342,000 to help pay for the inpatient, outpatient, med management, intensive outpatient detox. So, it's actually revenue to the Community Mental Health Center for those services that are contracted through Region 6.
So, that amount under budget item 12517, under the Community Mental Health Center, of $3.1 million, is being augmented, then, by the...
There's a contract. There's a... Contract at the beginning of the fiscal year that Region does with the Community Mental Health Center. Then throughout the year, all of the contracts that Region 6 has are looked at to see where money can be moved, because it's not being expended at the rate in which we originally had budgeted for. So, then we move it around. We approve it, it goes to the state, the state approves it, and then the dollars are sent, and adjustments are made to each of those contracts.
Okay, so, the amount that we're seeing here, the $3.1 million in our budget, is actually being raised to $3.3 billion for this resolution? Am I right in that? Okay. And those increases are already dedicated to something?
Yeah, they go to whichever services, when you look at where the money is being spent. If they needed extra dollars for inpatient, because their patient units of service would increase, money goes to that. If there's money for outpatient that's needed, dollars go to that. And then again, every quarter, those dollars are looked at through the budgeting process at Region 6 to see how that spin down is occurring, and whether additional adjustments should be made.
And this would be one of those quarterly adjustments? Okay, great. Well, I only bring this up because I think we're all concerned about the total lack of long-term mental health care beds and capacity in Douglas County. We need to do something about this. This is a front-burner issue for Douglas County. If we have available resources here, and maybe this $451,000 that is in the Douglas County Health Center's budget for specifically long-term mental health, might offer us some latitude there. That's the purpose of this discussion, and hopefully we can get an answer on that and revisit this way next meet as the Board of Trustees at the Douglas County Mental Health Center. Thank you.
Well, and I do just want to remind the board that back when behavioral health reform occurred, that was the closing of the regional centers and sending folks back to the communities to be served, which is a good thing. But those community services and the capacity of those services, or the services themselves, were not completely in place before behavioral health reform went to the youth issue. One of the pieces of that reform that did not take place, that the state said they were going to do, was the long-term care. Originally, they said, "Regions, don't worry about it. We'll do it." Then they came back and said, "Well, Regions, what are you doing about it?" We reminded them, "State, you said you were going to take care of that." So, we then, as the Regions, went and started to talk with some of the facilities within each of the communities that had mods or areas in which they were not full. And we said, "Would you be interested in converting some of those beds to long-term behavioral health?" Most of those facilities said no, because it is...they would have to hire more staff. It was a whole different population to which they were used to serving. And the state did not agree with that direction. In the meantime, Douglas County has always served long-term patients with mental health issues, and we have seen an increase in those, and actually have dedicated floors for that. My recollection is, and I could be wrong, but I think we still contract with the UNMC Psychiatry Department to provide some of that long-term care to those patients that we house in our facility. I can also tell you that the state wanted to make sure during this process that that facility stayed open, because that's where everybody sent those individuals that needed that kind of assistance. So, when we talk about long-term care, mental health long-term care, and as hard as it is right now to become a partner with the state, the state has to be involved with this. It is expensive, and again, it's a long-term care commitment, and we, as the county, can't do it all on our own. So, as we move forward in those discussions, the state needs to be a part of that, and needs to be a part of that solution, especially financially with that. We are getting bombarded regardless, because we're housing them at our facility, and we're paying for their care. But there's more than just us that are experiencing that in terms of long-term mental health needs.
Mr. Boyle, you want to speak?
Actually, what I was doing was asking you to ask Commissioner Borgson to talk about this, because she has a wealth of knowledge. I appreciate that, Mary Ann. Thank you.
Did you ever...please.
Thank you. I won't take very long. My name is Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm glad that you're discussing this today, because, you know, I don't have the resources anymore either, and I can't go to the state either. And I realize, and this is why I said last week, that your agenda rules are a little bit silly, because I'm not supposed to be up here according to your rules. I'm not supposed to be able to talk about anything on the agenda, and I'm not supposed to have back and forth.
Okay. Let me correct you.
That's the way it reads. Excuse me.
No, 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 no. Let me correct you.
I'm almost done.
Let me correct you, though. Let me correct you. Let me correct you. This is the consent agenda, so now that somebody's pulled something, you can debate this. You're trying...you're confusing citizens' comments, so this is your chance to make your point on this. And I wanted to just correct you.
If you read that statement, it tells me to shut up, is what it does. But let me just finish real quick. Because you're having this this morning, I know more about things now. I cannot individually come down and visit with each one of you committee members and find out enough to go out and debate with the community. I have to be able to debate with you, but it's not enough just with you, Mary Ann. I have to have the other people's vote, too, okay? But I appreciate all you do, and yes, we do need something done. But if you wait long enough, I think it was yesterday's World Herald, Amazon now has a computer application where young kids that are doing their Facebook things and all that, facial recognition will tell us who needs mental health, who needs mental health services. Problem is, when you get all of the population needing mental health services because some computer programmer thinks you do, where are the facilities and the tax dollars to provide the services? I don't have any more money. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let me clarify for the record. On the consent agenda, if a citizen has a question, they may come in and ask that question. Thank you. There's a motion to second already. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
With that, we'll go to recognitions and proclamations. We have one, two, five recognitions of service. Let me read those. Recognition for Efrain F. Aries, who has retired from the Douglas County Department of Corrections after 20 years of service. J.D. Wengler, who has retired from the Douglas County Sheriff's Department after 16 years of service. Also, Rita Walker, who's retiring from the Douglas County Department of Corrections after 34 years of service. Dennis Hassan, from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office after 27 years of service. And we'd like to recognize Stephanie Saunders Mann, who has retired from the Douglas County Department of Corrections after 23 years of service. Are any of those employees here by chance? Seeing that they're not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A through E for their recognition.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, and I'd like to thank all of those employees for their years of service, and wish them a good retirement. Commissioner Boyle?
As you were reading off those years of service, I just want people to realize that that equates to 120 years of service collectively by those individuals. That's pretty amazing. So, congratulations to all of them. Congratulations to them.
Yes, there's a motion to second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now go to citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners-related items, not listed on the board agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Louis Hymnus, 518 North 40th Street. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I am here to speak as the Campaign Committee of... I am here to speak as the Campaign Committee of, the Chair of the Campaign Committee of the Nebraska Democratic Party Black Caucus.
Okay, hold up, Louise. I'm at the, what is, I'm at the question that relating to the Board of Commissioners agenda. And I'm gonna need to put a line here because...
It's citizens' comment.
No, no, it's Board of Commissioners-related items. So unless you are speaking, I'm gonna cut that off, because you're in the political realm, and you're, you're giving some for the Democratic Party caucus, which I don't mind, but I need to put a precedent here. So unless you're talking...
Why are you gonna put a precedent when it's a note for you guys?
Because it's not related to the Board of Commissioners.
It's for you guys.
Okay, so I'm gonna just make it clear. Unless you've got something Board of Commissioners-related, I'm gonna cut that.
I'll read the note, then myself.
Is it related, is it related to the Black Caucus or the Board of Commissioners?
This is related to individuals in Douglas County who want to give the...
No, let me, let me, let me, hear me, hear me well. If it's related to the Black Caucus of the Democratic Party, I'm gonna cut you off. Is it related to the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, it is.
Be aware, at times, if you get into the Black Caucus stuff, I'm gonna cut it. Proceed.
Individuals who are politically related want to give Commissioners a note, a statement, which reads, "Fully aware that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners is in the process of redeveloping and reforming juvenile justice. We implore the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to employ logic by drawing up their programs before their blueprints for the better care of troubled youth. To develop programs and procedures that focus on rehabilitative justice with good community oversight. To reform sentencing guidelines for juvenile offenders, and to consider the inequitable economic handicaps of the financial disadvantage." And the, this note comes from individuals from the black community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Not done. I was reading the statement.
Okay.
There was discussion last night at the Administrative Services Committee. Mr. Kavanaugh hosted a meeting, a public meeting, and there was discussion on shackling the kids, juvenile offenders, to secure them when they get transported to the court to see a judge. And we were made aware that that decision to shackle them or not is made by the Sheriff's So I'm to understand that that's out of your control as to determining if the kids are going to be shackled or not when they go to see a judge. I also know that you guys have been adamant about putting juvenile detention here downtown because you don't want the kids to be shackled. However, you don't have that guarantee, so you're gonna spend millions and millions of dollars on that premise without a guarantee. I think that that is, I question the efficacy of that policy to say that, well, we're gonna build something in the hopes that somebody else makes a decision that, that we want to have. This is very, very, well, it boggles the mind that you would be, you would, you'd be so informed, but then want the public to believe that you have control over the shackling of the juvenile offenders. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we'll move on to presentations and letter A, which is an update on the Election Commission's, Election Office's space proposal. Brian Cruz, Election Commissioner, and Jerry Leahy.
Good morning. Well, first, I'd like to congratulate the Chair and the Vice Chair. So congratulations, gentlemen. So I'd also like to thank my partner in crime from the last two years on this project, Jerry Leahy. He's been with me every step of the way. So I would also like to thank my Chief Deputy, Chris Carruthers, the staff of the Douglas County Election Commission, and all of those who have showed up this morning to support this project that we're about to talk about. So I'll give you a few brief points of information here, some statistics, a few reasons for the new enhancements and advantages, and then Jerry and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have after that. So when we moved into our current facility in 1999, we had 272,000 registered voters in Douglas County. Today, we have nearly 359,000 registered voters. So that's an increase of 87,000 registered voters, which is a good thing. But as we get more registered voters, obviously, there's a lot more people to serve and to take care of. In this last election, we had 80,000 individuals requested an early voting ballot to vote, and we expect or project that number to be close to 100,000 requests for the 2020 Presidential General. In 2004, the percentage of folks voting early was 14%, and in this last election, it was 36%. So we're definitely on the uptick, and we only expect the number of registered voters and the number of early voting requests to increase as Douglas County continues to grow. Some of the advantages or the enhancements for the new Douglas County Election Commission will be that it will be centrally located. The new location is 121-00 West Center Road. It is in the Bel Air Plaza, and that's on the northwest corner. It's, it's right to the north of Burlington Coat Factory and that area. Nobby's is right there as well. So it's near the interstate. There's good interstate access right to the east on about 108th and Center there. 120th Street and Center Street are both major thoroughfares that basically cross the whole county, the whole city, and there is bus transportation to that location. There's additional parking. If you've ever been to our office, in an election time, even in non-election time, we've got like 35 or 40 parking spaces. This would have over 200 parking spaces, so that would be an excellent service to the voters. And then everything would be on one campus or under one facility. Currently, right now, we have off-site storage up off of Fort Street. We have 3,000 square foot up there, and we're paying over $20,000 a year for that off-site storage. And that stores election materials that have to be stored for 22 months by federal law. It stores ballot boxes. It stores precinct boxes and things of that nature. And in addition to the cost of storage, we have to pay a company when we need stuff from there, each election, to bring our ballot boxes and our precinct boxes to us. It's about $2,000 an election, because it's $1,000 for them to transport them to us to get ready for the election, and then $1,000 after the election to transport it back to that facility. One of the reasons we have to have that off-site storage facility is because, I think you've seen the pictures, some of you have been out there, but even now during an election season, our warehouse facility is so small that each and every morning, we actually have to move a bunch of stuff outside each morning. And if it's raining, then we have to tarp it in order to work in our building. And then in the evening, when we go home, we have to move it back into the warehouse, and that's an everyday occurrence during elections. It would be a much better working environment for the mental well-being and physical health of our employees. Because of our confined space, we have to work untold hours. In this last election, our full-time staff worked over 55 days without a single day off, 12 to 16-hour days, and our temporary employees worked tons of overtime numerous days in a row without time off. Safety and security would be another big factor here. Currently, in our current building, we have two vaults that store our ballots, the early voting ballots that we get in, that we store in vaults before we count them, and then after the fact. And those, two of those vaults are, we have to use the public hallway to transport those to and from our counting room, and that's the same public hallway that the public uses to access the public restroom. In our new facility, the vaults would be connected to the counting room, and they, so they would be secured to the counting room. Also, in our new facility, our work areas and work stations that process voter registration and early voting requests that have personal and sensitive information on it for voters of Douglas County will be secured away from the public behind a barrier or wall. Currently, if you've been in our office, it's, it's right behind the front counter there, and there, there are stations and people, you have the potential for hearing phone conversations, possibly seeing papers, looking at computer screens, and things of that nature. So in conclusion, at the Board's direction and the support, Jerry and I, along with our leasing partners, have worked diligently on this project for over two years now. The space for a new election commission has been a topic of discussion for many years. As you well know, it predates me. We have come to a point today where we have identified a new location and a building that provides a better working environment for the staff of the Election Commission and will allow us to continue to enhance our standard of customer service in a secure environment for the voters of Douglas County. It is imperative we have a new location before the 2020 presidential election. Basically, that gives us this year, 2019, to finalize the plans we have, have our leasing partner do the build-out, move, get settled, have voters get familiar with our new location, and be ready to roll in 2020. So I should say that Jerry and I have been working with the leasing partner again at the direction of the Board. There is a lease that's been drawn up. There's also been some preliminary plans that have been drawn up that are about 90% done. We've been working with them. There has been no direct cost to the Election Commissioner or the county at this time. It's included in, it will be included in the lease. And additionally, the build-out of the building. So basically, it will be a turnkey operation, except for the desk and some of the soft costs we have to provide. But the build-out of the, of our interior space is included in the lease price. So again, the building's at 121-00 West Center. For reference, it was the old Richmond Gordmans corporate headquarters, I think. There was a retail store there years ago. And we will actually be in the west end, where the Heffey Funeral Home was temporarily after their fire. They'll reconfigure that space for us. So it would be my hope to have a unanimous vote by the Board of Commissioners for a new election facility. I appreciate the good working relationship I have with each of you. I am asking for your support and your vote on this project as we move forward. Thank you, and we'd be willing to answer any questions, and I think there might be some folks that might like to speak in support of this, too, if that's possible at this time.
Anybody who wants to speak, please come now.
Hello, I'm Ann Charlson, 2706 South 107th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of Greater Omaha, and of course, we do a lot of work with the Election Commission. The League of Women Voters of Greater Omaha would like to congratulate the Election Commission, Brian Cruz, Deputy Commissioner Chris Carruthers, Justine Kessler, Election Manager, and their staff, who've performed an exemplary job managing the past November 2018 election. Their outreach to the community through stakeholder meetings and community organizations, encouraging vote by mail through a permanent list, press conferences educating the community, and voter registration training creates a message where all are welcome in Douglas County and encouraged to register and vote. Their professionalism, approachability, and remarkable organizational skills make it all possible. Yet, the current facility detracts from those efforts. Their conference meeting room is small and very crowded. If you've ever tried to go to the Election Commission office close to the election, you found the same things we've encountered and observed. The office is hard to find and not in a convenient location. Once you do find it, the parking lot is full, and there's little additional parking nearby. People are lined up out the door into the weather trying to vote. It's not hard to conclude that some of the people likely didn't have time to wait and were forced to leave without voting. Such an outcome is not acceptable. We urge you to support the Douglas County Election Commission's request to move to a different location. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Heliger. I live at 9630 Brown Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134, and I'm just a voter. I've been early voting since 2001, since they allowed us to early vote without having a reason to do it, and I love the election staff there. They're all cordial, but there's no room to move. They have a table about this big that you can fill out your envelopes for early voting, and people are climbing over each other to get to it. Once you get up to the counter, it's just as crowded. There's not enough room for the people that need to be there to help. And as I think Brian mentioned, you can overhear everything, which does make it a little, it's not very private if you have some questions. And I have been assured that there's good transportation. I'm still allowed to bring cookies, because I do try and bring them cookies on Election Day, because they work very hard and they're there. So I've committed that it's not too far for me to drive. But I do urge you to support it, because I, I think that we need to be proud of our Election Commission office, and while I am not a proponent of the discussion that's gonna take place in the legislature this year about voter ID, if for some reason that does go through, it's going to mean even more work and more concerns for privacy. So, but let's all pray that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sam Fisher, 18331 Dupont Circle, Omaha. I come to the table as an owner of a political consulting company, and so it's my job to increase that early vote for, for my clients, and we've effectively done that over the years. And I, I think the, the main purpose of the Election Commissioner's office is to be, provide professional and efficient services. And so I stand here today in an unusual, unusual position of asking for larger government things. But knowing the, right now, how much early vote is expanding, and those numbers will continue to trend very high, and knowing the upcoming 2020 presidential election, that they're gonna go that much higher, and then knowing how the lack of space, and it requires more labor and more space to process these early votes, right now, we've simply outgrown the space. And it's, it's as simple as that to me. Also, from a standpoint of centralized training, there will be an opportunity now for some trainings within the office versus going to other locations. And so I, you know, ultimately, we want to improve the voting experience for Douglas County voters, so I strongly encourage the Board to support this proposal.
Hello, I'm Diana Bunnell. I'm from Platsmit. I'm a temporary employee at the Douglas County Election Commission. Started there in August of 2016. They have me in when they have all this extra help they're talking about. I just want to tell you a few stories. When I first came in August of 2016, very busy in the office. Me and my counterpart were in the lobby of the office doing our work, which was doing early voting. To get that early voting in, we needed every inch of that office. That continued on this last election. Every computer station was used. People were working morning and night to get those ballots processed. Couple of issues with that office, not enough bathrooms, lots of women, two bathrooms. It's not a good situation. Parking is another issue for all of us. You know, we park up and down, I don't know if you've been there, we park up and down the road by the park, and you can't get across to get to work. It's not safe, and we need better parking. So computers, yes. Privacy, yes. We're all right next to each other. You can't have conversations without everyone knowing. Voters don't like it. Voters don't like it, that they can, we can hear the voters in the front, they can hear us. So, space, privacy, bathrooms, parking, please consider a new location for all of us. It's going to make us be able to serve the community even better. Thank you for your time.
I'm Mike Hogan, 2555 Fowler Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. And I'd just like to say, I've been temporary out there since 2008. And when I first started, you, you, you're working like this in an area, doing your work, fine. Now, you're working like this, you're up against your table, somebody has to get by, you gotta get further up against the table. It's uncomfortable, and you really, really need the space in order to do the job and to do it in a good and professional, professional way. And I just ask you to approve this just for work relations as it is now.
Tony Schomer, 4854 South 126th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here to represent, I guess, the employees of Douglas County Election Commission. I'm a, I've been there for almost 11 years now. I've seen in these last 10, 11 years, the growth of Douglas County, especially with our registered voter counts increasing every year. You see it in-person voting. We see lines snaking around our lobby. We've tried to reconfigure it to serve our voters as best as we can. They still are snaking out the door. We've had them wrapped around our parking lot in inclement weather. You know, we want to be able to serve these voters in an accurate and timely manner. You know, we, as employees of the Douglas County Election Commission, we uphold the integrity of the electoral process. And we feel with a larger space, we could do that, best serve the voter. When they come in and vote in our office, we can process early voting requests in a more accurate and timely manner, uphold that integrity. That, that is, I feel, as an employee of the election commission, what we want to do. And I urge the commission to vote yes on this, to help us in this manner.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Very supportive of this proposal to bring the election commission more central location. I've gone there often with candidates, excuse me, not often, about three times with candidates. And we have to drive there. And this location will allow us, particularly, I like to take the bus, to take transit to the new, new location. And I appreciate Brian's and Chris's work that they do. Very accommodating, answered questions. I think it's great. I'd like to say as much compliments as I could about their work, but I'll keep it short. Politics, the activities associated with the governance of a country or other area is my last statement. Thank you.
Down the road, Commissioner Boyle, Kavanaugh, Borgersons, and Kraft. Mr. Boyle.
Having been election commissioner before some of you were born, back in the 60s, I remember some terrific turnouts, one in which we actually had to tear sample ballots off the wall and have people vote with chicken scratches because during the Kennedy election primary in 68, pretty terrific, wonderful experience. It's really important, and I have, obviously, and I think, well, I know all of us, I'll speak for myself, really believe in making, believe in making voting as convenient as possible. It's the basic right. And I do have to, I think your name is Hellinger. You know, you, your words among everyone else's struck me the most when you said, "You're just a voter." You know what? You're the rock of our democracy. Just a voter. It's like saying, a woman saying, "I'm just a housewife," or something. It's the rock of our country. So, you already, what you said already stuck with me.
There, it's really kind of fun how this kind of turned out. I was, I kid, kid Mary Ann particularly about getting lost anything, anywhere west of 72nd Street, and that is exactly what happened. I was driving from, I have some family members who live out in the area I affectionately call France. And I was driving, driving east on 120th. And I hate to say, I am a distracted and lost driver. So I'm driving along, and I see traffic signals, and I think, "Oh, my God, this is where I want to go." So I turned left. I pulled, I ended up at 122nd or whatever it is, and ended up driving through the shopping center, you know, with the speed bumps and everything. And there is Richmond Gordmans sitting there for sale. I panicked, and I called PJ. I said, "Oh, my God, see if you can get a hold of this. See if we can get this building," you know. Well, it was too late. But it's such a good building, we, you know, we proceeded ahead and encouraged the election commissioner. So, and the way I, way I describe it is so that it's, people can really sure, be sure where it is, is, and for me, I could stand up and show you my girth, but to me, it's Caddy Corner from Krispy Kreme. So, extrapolate this Caddy Corner from, "Oh, I know right where that is." Are the donuts hot? You know? But anyway, this is really a serious discussion, but I, I, I can't tell you how much that I support this. This is really terrific. It's a great spot. You, folks who have worked there have been through a really difficult time, and I'm fully aware of it. The timing has always been off on trying to get this put together because you haven't, every time you try to do something, there's an election. And so it's not just, as you well know, we can't just say, "Okay, now we're going to move." That's not going to happen. Well, this is the time. We got it now. We got it together, and we can do it. So I'm really pleased, and I have said this before, and I really mean this, but I was the election commissioner that worked with Bobby Rosovich from the Clop Printing Company to put together the filling in of the ballots and so they're scanned. We went to Iowa City and saw that happen, and we put it together for the presidential primary when Jimmy Carter was running. And a lot of opposition to trying that. People were afraid it would fail. And I said, "Well, always have the paper ballots." Well, it's a system that's proved itself and really makes it convenient. But at any event, I will, I said this, and I really mean it. I think we have, in public office, in the election office, I think the best election commissioner we have ever had. And he, he deports himself in a way that is not partisan. He does it in a very friendly way. His attitude is so cordial, public service. I mean, he is really terrific. He's got it together. So I really appreciate his leadership because he's the one, along with Mr. Leahy, who've brought us to this point. And bus service was always important, but I'm not sure that it is so much anymore, although, you know, it took 45 minutes to get to the present location from the, from downtown. I had a person who actually voted for my wife who told, told of his trip, and it took two transfers to get there. And plus, the address has always baffled me. You know, it's south of Dodge, but the address is north. And I'm always challenged when I'm driving, so it's difficult. But the, I think it's, I think this is the answer. And so I, I really, I can't tell you how much I support this, and I'm sure the board will as well. And I want to thank all of you folks who came down and testified, but especially, I want to thank just the voter. Thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, Mr. Cruthers, you do a fantastic job, and kudos to you. I've said it before, it's true. What you do, what the election commissioner is designed to do, provides the air supply for our democracy. Honest, accurate elections are what this democracy is based on, and you do a good job to help us provide those. So thank you. Just a couple of questions, Brian, if you've got a second regarding this. The facility that you're in now, and I think we all agree, it's inadequate, and you need to find a new home, is a county-owned building. Is that correct?
As far as I understand, that's correct. Yes, it is.
And the proposal is to move into rental property at 120th and Center. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. The discussions that you've had with the realtors and folks involved with the property, and the lease that you've alluded to, I haven't seen, how much is that lease?
Do you, can, Jerry can help me with this too. Thank you.
Jerry Leahy, public property. Just for some of the basics here on this, this project, we're talking about 13,000 square feet for the election office, administration, election office, however you want to refer to it. And this is still in draft form, but I think we're pretty close to the figures that are going to be finalized. We're talking about 13,000 square feet at 725 a square foot. So, it's, it's very attractive. It gets better. The storage space that Brian mentioned, that he's paying, how much? 27,000 a year? We're going to pay for 6,000 square feet of storage space, 450 a square foot. So, overall, it's, it's an approximate $122,000 annual lease, plus some CAM charges, et cetera. But it's going to be in the neighborhood of 135,000 a year. Excellent space. Obviously, you've heard the needs of the office and the needs of the employees. And we actually had a committee a couple of years back that Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Borgerson were on. And we, we tried to include everyone in the business of real estate to give us a proposal. We had two. First one, Mike and I loved. Mary Ann did too, I think. 84th off of Grover seemed really appropriate. Totally unacceptable offer. And Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Borgerson agreed. So, we moved, moved back to the Gordmans property, which was one of the offers, and we've met, I don't know how many times, with architects and Brian and his staff, and involved Jeff McGill in our department, did some space study needs, got that square footage reduced, and here we are. So...
Okay, well, thank you. The current square footage of the election commissioners is what?
10,000.
Okay. And the current storage square footage is what?
3,000. 3,000.
I'm sorry?
Three.
Eight?
No, no, three.
38.
No, no, 3,000 is what he's leasing right now.
Okay. So, that's 13,000 all-in going to 19,000 all-in under this new proposal. You know, one of the concerns, and we've talked about this, is that you own your home now, and this is a proposal to move into rental property, which doesn't excite me at all. The purchase price of this facility, do we know what that is, or the assessed value of this property?
I, I don't know the, the value of the property, but I would imagine it's pretty substantial.
Yeah, we don't know. I mean, that's the point.
No, we don't know.
It would be nice to know, at least the assessed value for the property. Because, you know, we've had this discussion, and there's no question that you need a new place, and this seems to be adequate in terms of space. But the move from an owned property to a rental property is, in my opinion, in the wrong direction. And so if that were a property that could be purchased for long-term use by the election commissioners, that might be an option. That's a question I'd like to have at least, you know, an answer to in terms of what, you know, what's the assessed value of that property now. The location at 120th and Center is actually farther removed from the center of population of Douglas County than your current location. I'm sure you're aware of that. It is. If you look at the center of population, it's north of Dodge Street, and it's in the opposite direction of the direction that you're moving in. But my understanding is that, that one of the considerations is the availability of mass transit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that was one of the things that we looked at in NRR, I believe it was in the RFP, but that was one of the requirements. And we, we had some parameters as well in the RFP. I'm going off memory now, but I believe the parameters were basically 84th Street to 120th, Center Street to Maple or 680 on the north. So, we wanted to stay in the center of the county as much as possible.
Sure.
And I would just, you know, when this first came up, we, we looked like at Sports Authority on 72nd and Dodge. When they went out of there, I think it was Sports Authority, and I jumped on that right away and, and called a realist, in the very beginning, called a real estate friend of mine and asked him. And he said, "You can't even begin to afford that because of the location," you know. They were dividing that up into four bays, but he said, "Because of the location across from Nebraska Furniture Mart and that," you know, he said, "You just can't even begin to afford something like that." So we, we set our parameters, and we've tried to do the best we can, but still be fiscally responsible for the taxpayers of Douglas County as well.
Right. So, relative to this public transportation adjacency, how, how close is public transportation to this location?
120. 120 and Center Street, there's, there's a bench, right? I believe, I believe the bus stops at 122nd and Center.
There's actually a shelter.
Is there a shelter? Okay.
And how close is public transportation to your current location?
Right now, it stops down on 114th, and then they have to walk up the hill to 115th, and then they have to turn left or south and then come to our building. And when they're doing that, they're walking in the streets there where all the cars and the traffic are currently.
So you're talking like 114th and Dodge, and then they walk the five or six blocks to your facility?
I, I think it's 114th and Davenport is where the bus actually stops, which is a couple of blocks.
It's a couple of blocks?
It'd be one block up the hill and half or three-quarter block over.
And heavy traffic, yeah.
Right. A hard, a long block up that hill.
And this new location would be directly down into the complex that the, that the facility is in?
It's right on the edge of the complex, but once you get dropped off, then you can enter into the Beller Shopping Center. So you're off, you would be off of actual streets.
Right.
Walking back to the facility.
And finally, the storage question, this 6,000 square feet of storage that you're talking about, that is part of this complex. It's adjacent to the 10,000 or the 13,000 square feet of office. Adjacent, correct?
It's correct. It's in the basement, right below. It, it, there's a dock there, which we're in need of. And then the, the storage facility would be directly below where our office space would be.
Okay. We have, I think in the past, stored election commissioner stuff on county property. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did for a little bit out, out at the Fitzgerald home before we started the renovation project. I, I think Brian's problem, and even his predecessor, is the distance between the storage and the election office. This would be kind of like all-in-one, all-in-one, what do they say? Stop, one-stop shop? We used to use that. And that's, that's what he's looking for. And, and I, I threw this out to Brian a while back. The security will be so much better for him. With the history of what's going on all over the country with elections, as Commissioner Boyle stated, we, we've been very fortunate for a long time to have very safe, confident election commissioners and accounting of balance. When there's a need for a recall, there's a lot of confidence.
Did you say recall? Second? I think he meant recount. I think recount was the word that you were looking for.
I can't even go back. I can't even go back.
Thank you, and I, I agree.
Close election.
We're, you know, we're in the process of, of trying to make it better, and I, I agree with everything they're saying in terms of the competency and the, and the excellent services we currently receive. You know, I guess I keep coming back to this rent-to-own question, and, you know, it might make... And, you know, it might make some sense if we at least explored the fact of a couple of things. Would it be possible for the county to acquire this as county-owned property? Secondly, how long is the lease that we're talking about proposing? Because the county, as you know, as the public property director, owns a lot of property in Douglas County. And so tying ourselves into a long-term lease when we own a bunch of property that perhaps could be repurposed to serve our needs without a rental cost, might be something to look at. I'm just asking that maybe before we go forward, we look at a couple of these things to see if there's a way to maybe use this as a, as a, as a transition point to a county-owned election commissioners as we currently have facility? Or to acquire this as a county property? Is that something we could get?
Well, let me say this. It's, it's a ten-year lease. And when you do a ten-year lease, that's how you get seven twenty-five. If you do a five-year lease, it's nine fifty-five or nine seventy-five. The longer you can commit, and we're going to be there. I, I don't think there's any question that voting situation is going to be the same ten years from now.
Sure.
And I, I think Brian is confident that he's going to have the space. Even if there's another influx of new voters, new population, he's going to be able to handle it at that location.
Okay. I want to thank you for all the work that you put into this, and Brian and the others on, on the board. Really, thanks a lot. You've obviously done a lot of homework on this. And it's just a matter of trying to get the, the best thing. It's not going to be perfect, but it'll be better. And if we can get there, that's great. I would be interested to see if there was any possibility of purchasing the facility at some point, if you can make an inquiry on that. It's no harm in asking. Because the fundamental concern I have is going from an owned property where we don't pay a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year to a rental property where we do, when the possibility may exist that, hey, could we buy this property and pay a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year on a mortgage? I'd much rather have a property with equity rather than a, a long-term lease that we just pay indefinitely. So if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks again, Brian, for all the work that you do. You do a great job. And Chris, thank you. Jerry, as always.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borges?
I want to add my thank yous as well to both of you for the work on this. And as Brian said, it's been two years in the making for this particular location, but much longer than that in terms of discussions. But, you know, I, I sit here and I can still remember going out to visit that location and asking Brian to come and present what he presented me to this board so that the public could see what we were talking about. And not only for the employees that work there on a daily basis, but for our volunteers that we bring into that office during the election and the temporary employees that we bring in. That was a big shame on us for not providing adequate office space. And so when this board decided collectively to go down that road to really take this seriously and look at it, it's, it makes me proud to see where we are today in being able to have you stand before us and give us this proposal that you've worked so hard on. Voting, or the election commissioner office in, just in general, as everyone has said, is one of the most important things that we provide at the county level to our voters and to our citizens. And we should have and we should be proud of that office that they come into. And so I'm excited about this, transition to this office. And again, the work that you guys have done has, has been amazing. So thank you for that and look forward to putting this back on the agenda for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and we're selling. By the way, sorry. And we will be selling the existing building that we have as the election commissioners office, so there'll be revenue from the sale of that.
And that is an excellent location, as by the way, it's been said.
For other things.
Commissioner Craft?
Yeah, I, I've been familiar with the office, walking in in nineteen ninety-seven to file my first petition to run for office. But Brian, this is totally opposite, totally opposite what's happening around the country with voter suppression. Aren't we supposed to be suppressing the vote instead of making it easier for people?
No. I'll say a definitive no on that.
Thank you. I'm, I'm so glad. Yeah, I, I'm proud to be part of making it easier to vote. That office was inadequate in nineteen ninety-seven, and it is, is even more inadequate now. So you're going to be able to provide, provide professional and efficient services. We should save costs on labor, transportation. There's going to be savings that we don't even know exists right now. And I've studied, it just has been something I've done since I took over the business in nineteen seventy-three. I've studied retail market rates. And seven, what is it, seven twenty-five?
Seven twenty-five.
That is an excellent rate. And four twenty, four fifty? That is also, for storage, that's excellent. I mean, yeah, those prices, I don't know that I'd want to own. Yeah, you, you've done an excellent job. You've heard a lot of praise today, but that's beside the point. You bring a totally different attitude than other election commissioners around the country. We love you for that. Thank you. And Larry, did you have a question? Because I saw you move up. If you do, you need to come to the mic.
Well, I have a quick statement. I am a proponent.
I'd just like to say real quick, thank you for all the accolades, but, you know, I'm only one person. And it's really our, our staff, our full-time staff. And as you can see, our, our temporary staff who returns year after year after year. You know, they're the ones that make me look good, but they're the ones that really make everything tick. So I'd just like to be sure and thank them this morning as well. So thank you.
Hold up, Commissioner Morgan?
I'll be abstaining from the vote on this matter for the reason that when you requested proposals for a, a new location, our company had that listing. And I stayed out of it for that reason. We made a, you know, a proposal to you at that time. Ryan Ellis was involved in doing that on behalf of our company as the president. So I will be abstaining, and I want to state that because we're supposed to state why we abstain. I also want to mention, follow up on what Mary Ann said. We should take our time, make sure we prepare well to put that building out there for people to bid on that building and so on. The other thing I'll, I'll mention, just as a real estate thought, and I want to also make sure I state where Commissioner Boyle's election office was. It was in the southeast corner of the courthouse, way at the far end on the ground floor. And I can remember going there and meeting Mike and saying, "Someday you'll be mayor, Mike." And, and he was. That was a long while ago. The other thing I want to mention, I think this building probably has close to seventy or eighty thousand feet in total.
The, the new one.
And when you buy that kind of a building, do we really want to be in the real estate business of leasing out the other part of it? Or is there some use that we'd have for it? That's something to think about. The other thing I want to mention is when you'll walk through this building, any of you, and if you take a contractor you know with you, and you look at the finished space that you're going to have, you could easily spend eighty dollars a foot on the TI, tenant improvement. And Jerry, I know you know this, and that's a big item sometimes when you're changing an office and what you spend here, the building commission, when you're renovating the shelf space. And luckily, Heffey, and Heffey was there on a temporary basis and made some very nice improvements to that building. And then they're going to make some more, I think, in your adjustments. And I haven't seen those. But I want to thank you, Brian, and I also want to thank your team of people. And I also want to say something to League of Women Voters. We appreciate that you have a person at our budget, all of our budget meetings, and what you do in the community to make people aware, and for coming down here this morning just to state your stand, because the league is pretty special in this nation. And we appreciate what your volunteers do, because I know that the pay isn't too great for all that you do. So you're not overpaid, that's for sure. Thank you all for your comments, and good luck with this.
Commissioner Doot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll be brief. Brian, you've been so polite and respectful, actually sweet through this whole process. I was kind of curious to see, how long can we drag this guy along without ever actually giving him the more space? But we've, we've known for a long time how, how crowded you were. It's simply about the cost. And, and this seems like the way to go. It seems like you have found a good location, a good price. Is that, is that seven and a quarter, what does that, happens to that over the ten years? Is there some kind of inflation adjustment for that?
There's a two percent.
Two percent? Nice, nice. I mean, this sounds, this sounds like a good deal. It, it really does, and I absolutely intend to support it. But I just want to remind the board, this is another incremental cost, another strain on this year's budget that's already going to be a real challenge for us. So I just, another hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that today we don't have in our budget, another incremental increase, they're all over the place. And, and that's part of the, the challenge to us. But the timing is right, and I applaud you for, for taking the steps that you have. Sounds like a good move. I mean, we remember when it was here in the courthouse, under Margaret Jurgensen, the great late Arlene Steyer. It was nice having them here, but times have changed, the courthouse has changed, and, and this seems like the best location for you moving forward.
Commissioner Boyle?
I, I want to let you know, and I, this is probably way premature, but I have asked Metro Area Transit to consider, if we can get the landlord to agree, to consider rerouting their buses right to your front door. And so that when, and maybe even putting the election office on the front of the bus so that people will be able to spot that bus and know they're going to be dropped off right at the front door and then picked up. We need, it just, it's a sensible change. Maybe they can do it, and, but they're very open to it, and I wanted to tell you that. So we'll get some other folks involved in that, but I, I know Kirk pretty well, a lot of us do. So anyway, I just want to, again, congratulate you. You're, you're doing a heck of a job, and I'm really proud that you're our election commissioner. You know, it's around the country, all these things going on with elections and the things you hear. And I'll tell you the truth, I had one experience with fraudulent voting all the time I was there. And it was a very wonderful woman in the Republican Party who went out to rest homes.
Of course.
Well, you know, the whole office was created because of, because of corruption in politics here. And, and I'm very pleased to say it was a Republican machine. And I've got the books on it. It's just fascinating why this was set up. But in any event, we've done our own mistakes too. Anyway, so she's a very wonderful woman, and so I got a call from a rest home. And they said, it was a nurse, and she said, "I'm very disturbed. There's a woman who's taking ballots into a room where the patient is not, she's comatose. Something's wrong." And I said, "Yeah, I think so." So I, I knew it was, I'm not going to say her name. She was a wonderful, wonderful lady, working hard. So anyway, when she, I said, "Have her, I want to talk to her." So we got her on the phone, said, said her first name to her, and I said, "Please, stop what you're doing and come on into the office, we need to have a visit." And she said, "Well, okay, I, I kind of thought you'd be calling." So when she came in, I mean, there's no sense in, you know, this is, I guess, just sensibility. When she came in, she sat down, as I said, she was a wonderful old lady. She's older than, probably in her eighties. And so I said, said her name again, and I said, "You know, you, you can't do what you're doing." And she blurted out to me, "I just want my Republicans to win." And I thought, "I'm not one, but anyway." I said, "You know, I understand it." She started to cry, and I said, "You know, nothing's going to happen. We're not going to do anything further, but we have to figure out, you have to tell us what you did." And so she did. And I said, "You can continue doing this kind of thing. I'd like to have you do it with a partner, but I think now we have trust." And she did continue doing it, and we trusted her. But that's, that's kind of the Omaha and the Nebraska way. We're not interested in crucifying people, you know? And that's the kind of attitude that I think you have. And frankly, this, we're so darn lucky to live here. We're just, this is the Omaha way to do things, have people come down and, and I, I'm just impressed. It's a wonderful day for me. Thanks.
Brian has no more questions, but I want to add my thanks to the work you and the staff have done, and we look forward to putting this on the agenda. Thank you. Oh, Mary?
I was just going to ask that I think it's okay to put it on for next week's because we don't meet the following week. And I understand that there's a scheduling, but I think you heard what the board has said, and so putting it on next week should be fine.
Okay, great.
Thank you all again to the staff and the volunteers, particularly for this item. It's, it's going to be timely here to come. Appreciate it. Thank you. Come on in.
Thanks again. My name's Larry Store, 501.5 Lafayette. And, and thank you, gentlemen. I'd pass that on, and I'm glad that I don't have any suspicions of voter fraud. But as we make voting easier, we need to have our ears and eyes open. The reason I came back here today is a couple of our council members used a term that really sets me off. And if we were a true democracy, what we would be doing here today is asking fifty-one percent of these people to make the decisions or to make the vote instead of you people. So please, read the founding fathers as to why we are not a democracy. Now, after the Constitution was signed, there was some factionalism. One of the factions was called themselves Democratic Republicans. The two terms do not work together. Democratic republicanism led to the excesses of the French Revolution. And one of our former presidents was a Democratic Republican before he was Democrat, et cetera. So please, if you don't understand, don't believe what I say. Go read it for yourself. We are not a democracy. Please don't buy into that. That's all we hear anymore. Even our representatives in the federal government call us our democracy. We are not. Don't let them make us into a democracy. We elected you. Oh, and excuse me. Well, the ladies left. But I know the League of Women Voters do a lot of good things. But I don't for a minute, unfortunately, think that they are nonpartisan. And I'll say this, because they printed it in their voter guide. If you look at the partisanship of it, all of the liberals, all of the Democrats responded to their questions. Most of the conservatives and Republicans did not. Ask yourself why conservative Republicans would not respond to the voter guide put out by the League of Women Voters. Now, they're probably a 501(c)(3). I am not. But they have more influence on you here than I do. That's not right. Thank you.
We're going to item six in the public hearing. Item A is addition to Primus Liquors Class 1, 121, 10904, Bali Bar Nails and Spa LLC doing business as Bali Bar Nails and Spa at 16821 Blondo Street, Suite 101. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here from that establishment? Okay, what I'm going to do is keep the public hearing open, but we have an issue because this, the establishment has not gotten the required notifications out. The affidavit for the list of property owners has not been submitted. So we're going to leave this open, and I'm going to ask if somebody can notify them and let them know that they need to get that in ASAP. Commissioner Borges?
And I think that's important to find out, because we had one of these before. And I think that's important to find out, because we had one of these before, and there weren't neighbors. So I'm trying to visualize what all is around there. So I don't know if us delaying this prompts any problems for that business to continue, and if there's a way that we can find out, or if you guys, as the clerk's office, have the list, can you, are there a lot of folks around that? Do we have a list, or what? Or nothing at all?
Dan Ash, Tugs County Clerk. We don't have a list of who's around there, but he did send the owner via mail and email the requirements to, or, you know, noticed that they need to get ahold of people within 300 feet of the, or 500 feet, excuse me, of the establishment.
Well, okay, then, can we put this back on for?
I'm gonna just keep it open.
Keep it open, okay.
We can, Chair Rogers and Commissioner Borges, and we can reach out to them again and make sure that they know what's going on, so.
Yeah, I just don't want the same thing to happen that happened the last time, where there wasn't anybody to send it to.
Commissioner Moore.
So I'm glad you brought this up. There may be some way through the, maybe the assessor's office to look who owns property nearby. It's not our job to do it, I don't think, but that may be one way. And there's also, you know, Google Map or whatever, but all that kind of stuff, which I'm really proficient at, so if I can help, you know.
Commissioner, may I say something? So I wasn't sure if the board was gonna continue this to a date certain, and I think that you should, because when Mr. Ash reaches out to the property owner, that property owner, when they give notice to those around the business, they're gonna want to tell them what date the hearing is. And that's part of the, I believe that's part of the notification in the resolution, saying, "Hey, property owners, if you want to come to the public hearing and talk." So I think you should set it to a date and time certain. I don't think it can be next week. I think your resolution says you have, that the property owner's supposed to give 10 days, so that's not enough. You don't meet on the 22nd, so I think you're looking at the 29th, if I am getting my calendar dates right, so.
Okay. Everybody fine with that? Fine with that? Okay. So with that, we'll keep the hearing open, and it'll be back on for the 29th. With that, we'll go to committees. Item A is Finance Committee. Item one is the Budget Report. Any?
Nope.
Okay, that has submitted. With that, we have need for executive session for.
Litigation and real estate, please.
We have need for executive session for litigation and real estate. Is there motion to go into executive session?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Moore, second by Commissioner Morgan, to go into executive session for litigation and real estate. Please vote.
Motion passes six, nothing.
And again, we're going to executive session for litigation and real estate.
In and adjourn.
Motion by Morgan Second, please vote.
Is Ellen still here?
She left.
Yes. And Mark is voting yes. You got mine, Ellen?
I do, yeah.
Good. All right, I'll see you over in your office.
Motion passes. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Borges are absent.